Okay, we're back to starting with live for the first time with our monthly meetings. So we'll stand for the pledge. Hopefully everyone will remember the words.
...... from the United States of America and to repose in the precious sands of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think there's a misk up there.
I don't know.
Fran?
That wasn't me. There's an eye.
Go to the audio on that.
We'll call May Morandi.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
Dave, before we get started, I want to ask everybody to speak up and speak clearly as we're no longer on Zoom. We don't have microphones in front of our faces. We're reliant on this. So if we speak too softly, it doesn't get picked up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming. A little more of an inconvenience, but good to see your faces. Got things rolling, got a fairly long agenda tonight, I think. First, we have financial report.
So I'm just going to run through the hit list and stop the questions along the way. Interrupt me if anything. So first, tax collection through June. As of June 30th, we collected almost 1.8 million, which is about 90%. Same place last year, year before was 92%. But a lot more did roll in the following week of July. But I only have here through July 2nd. But again, everybody has until the end of January to pay or the county will send us a check for the difference. The AUD, it's the annual update document for New York State. It's due August 1st of every year. So I've been working on that and that'll be filed on time to external auditors. That's the EFPR group. They'll be here the first week of August. They gave me the dates, the 4th, 5th, and 6th. They're usually here only maybe two, sometimes two and a half of those three days. We do a lot through email as well before and after. They might reach out to the trustees for any questions, but usually it's just Jeff and I that do most of the audit. Moving into grants, some topics for discussion. So the ARPA funding, we finally got an amount of what we're getting. So that should be coming sometime at the end of summer. And then whenever we get it, it'll be another 365 days, we'll get the second half of it. So 100 and 100, basically. We'll have until October 31st of this year to do a report. And the report, they're still coming out with the requirements. It's basically if you have an idea of what we're going to spend the money on. There are, I looked it up right before the meeting, four sections. I'll send it out in email where we can spend the money. But most for us to qualify would be infrastructure, water and sewer. But that, we have time. We didn't even get the money, but we submitted the forms for that. Bulletproof vest program, this is a federal grant. Cold Spring has applied three times before and been awarded each time. This is for new hires or officers whose vests are about to expire. So Larry's looking for four of them. So we applied 50% of four vests. We won't know that until October, probably, if we get the grant. So a new grant that Larry can't be here but wanted to bring up, along with trustee Foley, is the body worn camera program from the federal DOJ. So I wanted to bring that to the board if that's something that the board would want us to look into. It's a 50% grant, up to $2,000 per camera, and it's by full-time employee. So if the police department, you know, it's, they're part-time, they work 20 hours a week. So full-time is 40, so we'll probably be eligible for six cameras, roughly. It doesn't include storage, but it would include the equipment and training to get it going. That grant's due August 31st, so we don't have to make a decision. But that was just released a couple of days ago. And this is for small municipalities or small agencies with 50 or under. There's another one for larger municipalities, which we could double apply for, but I don't think it's worth it for big cities, counties, states like that.
What are the technology fees?
We'd have to get a quote from a reputable source. Axon Taser is one, and Motorola are two known brands that I know of. The storage, from what I understand, and the contract maintenance could be hefty. The grant only pays the upfront fees.
Yeah. I mean, that's the concern is, once you get them and you use them, you're tied into that extra cost for life.
I can ask Officer Burke to reach out and get tangible quotes before we make a decision on the grant, then.
And how much did you say the cameras were, Burke?
The grant will give you up to 2,000, which is half of it. So they'll pay up to 4,000 for each camera and startup costs. And then, so the, another big grant is the New York State Consolidated Funding Application. I sent an email out, maybe about two weeks ago, the laundry list of the funding sources. Did anyone have any ideas of what kind of a grants we want to apply for, if the village wanted to apply for any? So on the long list, I pulled out four that I think we would be more better able to qualify for. One would be if we wanted to upgrade any parks and recreation facilities. That's a 50% grant. So that could be redoing the bathrooms if you want to make them ADA compliant. If you want to make ADA compliant benches, it's the same thing with ships. You can do lots of improvements, but if you should also do some ADA, and then they'll pay for it.
And what was that one up to, or is there a...
That's a 50% match, but there was no cap or minimum on that grant.
And when does this have to be?
July 30th. And the other component of this is historic preservation. So if there's a historic property that you wanted to protect or restore, so similar, they'll pay for upgrades inside and some upgrades that aren't historic in nature, but most of them would have to be. So if you have to do like a facade of a building to keep it in the historic district, that's okay. And then if there's problems behind it, like rotting wood, they'll do that as well. But it's because the main project is to keep it historic.
And it doesn't have to be a village-owned?
It does.
It does? What's that?
Is this building historic?
It's in the district, but it's not. That's an interesting question, Fran, since it's in the district.
It should, so for this grant, it says if it's not on the list as long as the district. If there's a district, then you would just have to put GPS coordinates and call and make sure that they're willing to do it. But as long as it's in the district, it should be eligible for the building.
And are there, are there parks, projects that you and Bugsy had in mind upcoming?
If that's parks, that's nothing that I can think of. Things that need to be done with the parks.
That we could apply, that we could use this grant toward, proposal in. I'm willing to work with anybody to write the grant if you try to.
No, but it has to be historic. Doesn't have to be historic. Bathroom doors down at Mayor's Park for the, and the utility room all could probably use new doors. Definitely could probably look into some new roofing down at the pavilion.
So for the parks grant, it can't just be repairing. You have to be doing something to provide a benefit to the public. And then you'd probably be able to repair some stuff along with the grant. But again, repairing can't be the main. You know, if you put a ramp out into the water and then you have to do the sidewalk three blocks before, something like that, you could tie it in. So I'm not sure what Mayor's Park looks like, but if you did a ramp to get a wheelchair in and then did the door, because that's a whole project, things like that.
I would think, oh, operating doors would be beneficial. What if they were to be wide enough to fit a wheelchair? Hence then you could get the new doors plus benefit the ADA. But it's 50% grant, so that would go with something. It's a block building.
And does the, does each of these repeat each CFA cycle? Or we, we don't know until they announce?
You don't know. So the CFA cycle is usually every two years, roughly. This one was a little longer. And the downside is you have to submit the same application multiple times if you choose different projects. So you can make a copy of it. The first half of the grant application is basic information. And the second half, the questions change. But you have to submit it multiple times, up to five times, I believe. So these grants are, they're designed for projects that are already in the works usually. And then it's like, oh, here's a funding source, let's move our project into the grant. And sometimes it's hard to backfill, to find a project to fit into the grant when the project wasn't already on the table.
So it sounds like a good thing to dovetail with, if you were to do a public parks master plan for the village and have projects lined up or concepts lined up and then apply for the CFA.
Yes.
To feather into those.
You could do that. Like some of the other CFA options, like one of them is for the Green Initiative for Water Efficiency. And that would be great. We could, the endpoints would qualify for that. However, you need to have engineering reports done. And that's not something that, even when this grant came out a couple of weeks ago, wouldn't have been able to get an engineer report, you know, for us within six weeks. And then to have to pay for that engineering report, and then you don't even know if you would get the grant. But you can't apply for the grant without an engineering report. And for the water meters, because we're replacing them in kind, the endpoints, I don't even know why we would even think about getting an engineering report. It's not something that we drop the ball on, we just, we don't need it. When we did the water meters, we would have had one. So the same thing applies for one of the other grants. I don't think I put it on here. You had to have an engineering report already done. And it was a $50,000 minimum for like water and infrastructure.
What is the maximum on the CFA? Does it...
It goes by funding source.
So the, if I have a protection fund for the parks and historic buildings, do they ever be...
I don't know off the top of my head, but the masses.
So maybe we could ask an engineer, either ours, even though we don't use them a bunch, or an engineer to quickly give us.
It has to be a state-like engineering report, like the state has a template that they would have to fill out. It's not just...
How many pages or how hard is it with something like this?
I'm not sure, because I don't really understand the engineering language. It might be something they do all the time, it might not.
Like you said, it's a fair assumption. Costs like a few hundred dollars and we can have $80,000 or the end forms put in or whatever we're talking. Might be worth it, but look into. Although we have a little bit of time. I mean, is there a way to talk to an engineer or something? Or what would I ask, or where would he go, or would he be familiar with this?
I can send it to, there's an engineering report on the EFC website. I can email you the template.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a look at it.
I did leave a message for EFC to see if that could be waived because of the project, but I didn't hear back. But they did say that our endpoints should qualify. They won't say yes or no, because we have to apply, but...
Right, okay.
They were optimistic.
Or maybe we send it, maybe we, you know, send in the request with an engineering report. It's a simple replacement, let them deny us.
They might.
And then they've done the one ask, right? That, when you talk about having to go.
This application is automated. I didn't start it, but I printed it. So it's yes, no, yes, no. So some things, if it says required, if you don't upload it, it might not let you continue. I don't know.
Okay. And if we found the old engineering report and the original installed the new water meters, would that qualify or...
If it was geared towards just the endpoints.
But it was part of the original project, so...
It might qualify you.
I would be shocked.
We did the original report.
I've been looking through what's left behind.
If somebody did it, it would be barred.
Yeah.
I didn't see it in our saved documents. So we might not have needed one because the water meters weren't funded by EFC. So we probably had some engineering done, but maybe not necessarily the specific.
So wouldn't the supplier have a... I can reach out to Schmidt and Badger and see if they have it. Should. Since it's not really an engineering report, more of a installation or, and the product itself?
I read through the bid packet and it wasn't in there.
Right.
It was a 300-page bid packet, but...
Would you know everything else about that?
I skimmed it and then read, but nothing looked like the template I was looking for. And then the two other grants have to do with the LWRP and the comprehensive plan. The LWRP, though, is a $50,000 minimum. That's to execute a component. But our LWRP isn't approved by the state. It's still pending, so I'm not sure who would qualify. They'd give preference to those who have one executed. But the comprehensive planning, it's only a 10% match if we wanted to update more things. Like I think that for the code, maybe if we need more grant money.
The comprehensive plan has been approved, accepted by the Department of State.
Okay.
To update it is not a bad idea. Nothing is necessary from the LWRP to update it. For the LWRP to go any further, we need to complete the code update.
Do you think that the code update, do you think that they would need more than $50,000? No.
For the code update, I don't think we need $50,000. Maybe another $20,000 would be helpful. But I don't think we need $50,000. And that doesn't get us to a completed LWRP. That just removes the Department of State objection to the current LWRP. We're going to have to go back through the LWRP to see what needs to be updated. There may be statements there about, certainly in the comprehensive plan, there were statements about what could be done with Butterfield and what could be done with Dockside. Well, things have been done with Butterfield, things have been done with Dockside. So for the comprehensive plan, you would need to go back and update that. I don't remember how specific the LWRP was relative to those two properties. You would have, someone would have to go back and review the LWRP to see what that is currently stated and it needs to be updated. Definitely the comprehensive plan could use an update.
As I read that, Michelle, it says up to $1 million for the Smart Growth Comprehensive Planning Grant Program. So I imagine that that's, that would set you on a particular course. There would be work in addition to simply an updating of what we have.
The million dollars is...
Would be a smart growth focus in your, there was some of that in the, in the last plan.
So that million dollars is for the whole state? I think that this is, yes, a million dollars for the entire state for the Smart Growth Comprehensive Planning Grant. These up to numbers are what's in the pool? And we have to apply for a portion of the pool?
Oh, right. I see what you're saying. Yes, of course Cold Spring would get a million towards the smart growth. I was looking more at what the, what the program was. And it looked like, it looks to me like it's focusing in on a particular type of focus in your comprehensive plan on smart growth goals and principles. It's funny, for staff salaries and consultants, 10% match, it's a low match.
But the smart, changing the comprehensive plan oriented towards smart growth would significantly change the comprehensive plan. And would have significant impact on the code updates in the LWRP.
So that's what makes me hesitate. I would, yeah.
We don't have to apply for any grants. We just, you know, I sent it out and then, you know, I thought we should talk about just a couple, like three or four, the big ones. But, so then moving on.
Quick one on land acquisitions. It could be anything, if there's a piece of property we thought, extend our heart to whatever we can apply for that.
Yes.
But you said it had to have two, under the...
You need two appraisals? And it has to be land that would be parks or recreation used in perpetuity.
Right, okay.
And then the last grant, which just doesn't have a deadline, just came out. It's a rolling submission. They do this every couple of years, is for waste reduction and recycling program. You could buy household containers for the village residents. You can buy containers for garbage collection. You could do it for Main Street, for public. Or you could start composting. You could do flyers and pamphlets to try and encourage less waste.
So you could do garbage containers?
No, only recycling containers.
But you could buy them for all households in the village?
Yes.
And then they could consider size for loading.
And along with whatever purchases, you just have to do some kind of handout or email blast about what you can and cannot recycle.
That would actually be really useful.
This one's first come, first served, rolling submission, but it just came out less than a week ago.
Does it give you a max that we can apply for?
I know it's a 50% match, but I didn't, I don't know the max off the top of my head.
And there's no deadline with that one over?
No deadline.
Okay. We'll follow up on that.
Recycling containers.
And the ones that it could tip.
Yeah.
Yep. The residents pay 50%, and the grant pays 50%.
Fran, I can't hear you over here, so I imagine Jeff can't hear you over there. And I have my hearing aids turned up all the way, so...
I told you, Marie. My mom's home.
Yes.
I said it would be nice for us to apply for that, even if the residents pay half a week and the match pays half, or we could break that down however. And everyone would have, say, recycling, containers.
Be easier for the crew.
Containers, yes. Especially if we get a new truck that actually has the thing we could hook up to. Look, give me 30 looks, Bugs.
This grant...
Those are happy things.
This grant is much smaller in the documents, like the CFA is like 500 pages. This one's probably only about 20, so I can email this one out. And it gives you what questions would be and what kind of planning. So we know if it aligns with the village's goals.
Do we have to, if we're going to purchase these recycled containers, do we have to buy them on state bid?
Or procure them ourselves according to policy, yes. So we'd have to advertise, because it would be over $30,000. So then after grants, financial report for the current year. We're a month and two weeks in. Nothing big really going on except the tax collection. And then the financial report for last year preliminary. The auditors will audit it. There is a large amount of savings. The village was fortunate enough to receive some extra revenue from sale of properties. The mortgage tax for everybody, I think, in the county was double what it usually is. Not quite double, but $18,000 over. Parking fees were great this year with tourism. And there was a lot of savings. We had paid some vehicles off early because we didn't know what the pandemic was going to bring us. Health insurance was cheaper. Turnover and salaries, so there was savings and some savings in salaries. The dump truck is out for bid now, so we didn't have that payment. So the, basically everything that we're allocating in the current year budget from fund balance is being replenished from savings from last year. So at the end, I have a chart of, you know, where our fund balances stand. And then for, within the next meeting or two, I'll have a budget resolution to move money between. I try to keep it within the departments, so then any lines that are over budget will be corrected.
Now, as I read this, the water fund is good.
Yes.
Water and sewer, not so good.
Water is good relative to the water fund. Sewer is a little lower.
But it's down by 130,000, the fund balance.
So the water and sewer fund balances were a little inflated because we were carrying ban money for projects that we were going to finish and then we didn't need the money anymore. So like sewer fund, we paid back a lot of money because finally the, you know, the lower building, it's not that much money left to do. Like we were carrying over $100,000 for it, almost two. And the work was done and we didn't need it, so I paid it back. So we were holding pretty much borrowed money. So these numbers are more true to where we should be. I still think that if the sewer fund is rather healthy, it's just lower than the rest. Any questions?
She would have you, just the, back to the land grant, the acquisition grant, does it have a deadline on it?
Yeah, that's all July 30th.
July 30th. And is that something that will happen again next year or not?
Probably two years.
Two years?
And you need the two appraisals in order to apply for it?
Yes. Was it also that this place, that it was for sale? Did you say something like that?
Yeah.
Do we need that?
Yeah. It needs proof that it's for sale or the intent to be sold in the near future.
Okay. Update on the garbage and dump truck? Are they in motion, or are they bids?
So I've asked him to send me the specs to put it back up because you passed the resolution. He was out last weekend, said he'd get to me Tuesday and didn't follow up, so I'll follow up again to put that back up to bid.
And just back to, also to the recycling cans. Could you just see what that would cost us? Or if, can you find out what a bid would be? Or do we have to put it out for a bid to actually see what the cost would be per, to buy them, like in gross?
Could probably call around to get a rough idea and then...
I think that'd be, that'd be good. Because if we do get a lift for the truck, you know, and stay with it, and then we're going to have to get garbage cans that have the lift bar on them, so we're going to have to supply those. So it'd be good to know what it would cost in bulk. I can take a look, because I had LHI in here three years ago. We were looking into this. I might still have the paperwork on it, on what he would have, what their rough numbers were back then, if that helps any. Okay, whatever we can find out on that.
Also, the number of units that, that were, that were part of what they estimated. Because if it's, if it's a price, let's say $80 each, that might be based on more than 1,000. And if it's $90 each, that might be based on more than 750, so you need to know.
Yeah. No, I'll take a look, I'll see what I have.
Question just out of, just because I don't know. So the bar, the bins that have the bar lift, are they universal to all trucks or...
For the most part, the mechanical arm, the mechanical lifts are universal. Problem is, some cans are this wide that have the bar. And then there's the 127-gallon ones that are this wide. So placement of that lift system would be a lot easier if they were all universal. Instead of praying to God, we have it over enough this way, so when it does lift up, it's not hitting the side of the truck with these 126. Some of them are even going up to about 140-gallon cans, it seems.
I was thinking, I'm sorry. But we wouldn't be looking at bins that large. We'd be looking at bins that are less than 120 gallons.
Yes. Yes, but if she was going with, could people use their own cans?
No.
Like I said, some people...
No.
Okay.
I was thinking from manufacturer to manufacturer, if you're buying them and, like, say we got X amount as part of this grant from one manufacturer and two years later, Y amount from another manufacturer, would they, could the truck deal with all of them?
For the most part, yeah, they are universal.
Thanks.
Anything else for Michelle?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, thank you.
Michelle, thanks.
Okay. If Larry's not here, I'll, I'm not going to skip it totally, but I will keep things moving here so people can come back and stick around. One thing, when we get to historic district view, we're going to, we're going to move the map towards the end so we can, so we can move everyone out of here as quickly as we can.
Oh, that's okay, I'm waiting for Hal anyway, so.
Okay, cool. So let's get that. We have something from that. Well, who do we have here? Bobby, why don't you go?
Sure, okay.
I'll just take a little out of order here.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be back to public again. It's been well over a year since we've been together, so nice to be here. County Phillips Town Report, July 2021. As everyone knows, the town hall has been completed for quite some time now. Still a couple of little things going on in here, but like you said, I'd very much like everyone to stop by and take a look at it, you know. and take a look at it, it's, you know, really nice. We're really proud of the work that was being accomplished, although it took a little longer than we wanted to, but we got it done, so. Uh, we passed several resolutions for the highway department. Uh, purchased a new skid steer, a new skid cutter for a skid steer, and a new dump body for our two thousand fourteen F five fifty. The price for that new dump body is seven thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. We also awarded a lot of bids for the new building as well, uh, for the highway department. Plumbing went to LJ Coppola in an amount of five hundred and nine thousand dollars. HVA should work, went to CB Strain at an amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. And electrical went to EJ Electrical, now at three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We also awarded the construction administration to Palumbo Group. Uh, we, last, when we did the town hall, we didn't have the administrator, he was, so it was kind of difficult. So it was like myself, Johnny, and Richard kind of went over to saw the construction, and, you know, it took a lot of time, so we thought it would be our best interest to hire a construction project enhancement for this particular project, so we're going to do that. Uh, we passed the resolution to use live load recycling for e-waste. Uh, several years ago, the county stopped the e-waste program, so we haven't been collecting e-waste out of recycling plant for quite some time, a couple of years now. Anyway, I did a lot of research, and I decided to use this company to start out with. We're going to be, had no charge to our citizens. Just go drop off your TVs, like deposit. We're going to do that for like three or four months at no charge, to see how much we have, see how much it takes, how much effort is involved. If it continues, if it's not a lot, we will, maybe we'll continue to keep it for zero amounts, but if it gets to be a lot of cost to us, we're going to have to start charging for it, like a lot of towns charge twenty-five dollars for a TV, ten dollars for a laptop. So we got to work out, if we do decide that, we'll have to figure out the bottom fees will be, but right now it's going to be free.
Bob, where are you going to do the collection?
Up at the landfill now. We'll do recycling on, it'll be Saturdays from nine to three o'clock, the way it is today.
And will you do any cleaning of laptops, for example, or cell phones?
No. We're just going to, just going to take them, and the e-waste company picks them up and they dispose them. That's what it'll be. And right now, you know, as we take, you know, recycling cans, bottles and so forth, like that, we take white, white, you know.
White goods.
White goods. Refrigerator, this company will take these refriger, not refrigerators, they will take air conditioners for us for free as well, which is a good thing, because right now we're paying to get rid of freon. So if he's not willing to take the air conditioners for free, that'd be on him to get rid of the freon, so it's going to help us with our budget to use the freon for the refrigerators and so forth that we have that will be.
How do you, can I ask, how do you advertise about this?
We will, just, we just started, I got to do, like, we got, I still got a little bit of legwork to do before we can actually start the process, but I'm going to, you know, step up the landfill this Saturday and try to scope out some things. I'm thinking about, you know, we have a garage that there is not being used, I'm going to figure it out over the next couple of weeks. I would say by September, we maybe should be able to start taking these recycling, the e-waste as well, a little bit. Uh, not the whole, I think we can do that. Okay, we issued a film permit for random production at St. Basil's. We appointed Jason Angel to, to, for counseling, he took the vacancy of Mike Leonard. Mike Leonard, uh, put his house up for sale, it sold much quicker than he anticipated, so, uh, unfortunately, he, he had to, he had to leave, he had some family issues he had to take care of, he had to sell his house, and he never thought it'd be that quick, so. Anyway, Jason Angel was appointed, he was on the meeting last week, so, uh, and, uh, with Jason, good luck, he'll be up for reelection, up for election in November as well. Uh, all our boards are meeting in person again at the town hall. We will still use the rec center if we need to for like large, uh, public carings and so forth like that, but right now, all, all the boards are meeting at the town hall. Garrison Goffkov and Shakespeare are still moving along on the planning board process. There'll still be probably several months before we get through that. Uh, the Desmond Fish Library removed their solar array, so now they've got approval to move forward with that, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of people against the solar array in that metal there, said to remove that as part of the project, so now that's going to move forward with the discovery trail. We appointed Robert Perpicello to the Board of Assessment, uh, Board of Assessment Review, so we have no vacancies at this particular time, which is good.
Isn't that nepotism?
He applied for the job.
Oh, okay.
Well, he's not, well, the only person he's related to is Tara.
And John.
Oh, and John. Well, you know, hey, it's more community like this, really good. Uh, tomorrow night, we're having a scheduling workshop with Nelsonville, and to discuss the marijuana, marijuana legislation. Also, on the, on the town, up the town garage, we did apply for these infrastructure grants that came out from the federal government for, for like three million dollars we applied for. Sean Patrick Maloney is in his hands, and he, he gave us a pretty good thumbs up that we're going to get a decent amount of money for that, for the highway. So, hasn't been a hundred percent approved yet, but he's saying it looks pretty good. You don't count until you get the money in the bank, so, thank you.
Well, I've got one question on the, for community that you guys use the, uh, donate like five hundred bucks.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Do we need a formal request?
Uh, I'll ask first.
Okay, I don't think we have a pass.
It's going to be, it's going to be September, right?
September fourth, if you have the labor.
Maybe we should give you five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Sure, no problem, I'll give.
What's that?
The flatbed.
I already talked to them.
What, flatbed?
We, we probably won't need, we've already, we sent a letter requesting this flatbed trailer.
Okay, for the, yeah.
Yeah, hold on.
Bob, could you give me, I didn't, you didn't email me a copy this month?
Oh, I, I thought emailed to you the other day.
No.
Okay, I'll send it tonight.
Thank you.
I just wanted to send it to you last night. Sorry, I'll send it.
Eric, apologies, I jumped past you.
All right.
Floor is yours.
Yeah. Hello, everybody. This is the report for the ZBA in June. We had two meetings that month, June third. Twelve Benedict Road, the board held a public hearing on an application for an area variance to allow an addition that would slightly encroach on a front yard setback. No comments from the public were received, and the board considered the variance neither substantial nor detrimental, and approved the request. Twelve Constitution Drive, a workshop on request for a six-foot-high fence, a public hearing was scheduled for June seventeenth. In other business, the board decided to stop requiring every applicant to complete the environmental assessment form since nearly all applications are exempt from secret review. Henceforth, applicants will only be asked to complete the form when secret review is necessary. Then, a meeting of June seventeenth, twelve Constitution Drive, the board held a public hearing on request for a six-foot-high fence located on one side of the backyard. The yard contained a new swimming pool, which required at least a four-foot-high fencing for safety. The applicants wanted to place the fence next to a permanent two-foot-high stone wall on the neighbor's property. Thus, the fence had to be six-foot high in order to have an effective height of four feet on the outside. One member of the public spoke in favor, and the board approved the request, noting one of the points, the many six-foot fences in the immediate neighborhood, and the untrusive location of the proposed fence. That was it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, skipping around here. It's still, it's, I'll just, I'll, if you don't mind, push you down a little bit.
No, thanks.
When you discuss the map, I don't know how long it'll take, but it's okay, I will move things along there. We don't have anything from tree advisory, right?
Correct.
And I'll come back to the, the other three here, fire company and others. So, uh, next to the water, wastewater, get Matt out of here.
All right. So the reservoirs are a little bit present word this time last year. Uh, we also used a little bit less water, six point nine three percent decrease. The bacteriological test in second quarter, PFOA, PFOS, dioxide, all found in good standing. We had three water service line repairs and one main, uh, six-inch gate valve that was on the lower end of balding on Chestnut that was replaced on six twenty-two by Gonzales Brothers. They also did the remaining section repair at fourteen Balding Ave the following day, the twenty-third. And Nine Wall Street is the newest one that was identified on Friday the second. Uh, have been in contact with the resident and waiting to hear back when that's going to get installed or repaired. The dam, as far as the action plan, there's been all the updates, revisions are completed, so we just need to send that out. Uh, kind of briefly touched on the badger endpoint upgrade, they were all ordered, uh, eight hundred and sixty-six of them, we should receive them by the end of September. Uh, the good news on that is that possibly we may have another year to get them all installed, so that'll work, depending on if that's true or not. Uh, still going back and forth with Westech on a refurbishment quote to start getting the filters done. Uh, no update on the DEP project. Moving on to wastewater, everything was pretty good, uh, rules were good, uh, we have forty thousand gallons of sludge hold off site, uh, still in the works of scheduling the E2 jetting inspection, uh, no updates on the private waste line at Pearl Street. Uh, new wastewater connection done now on sixty-five Balding on June fifteenth by Unifor. Uh, lower building, still trying to get that third or fourth wall completed, and still waiting to try and meet up with Bugsy about getting this service line repaired at the sewer plant. I think you're back with all of them. That's all I got. Yeah?
Many months ago.
Okay.
We hired a lawyer who was theoretically very skilled, again, in DEP approval.
Okay.
David Merzick, he was on the Steve that brought up, and we contacted him.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know if you were in the total.
No, I don't think I've had any communications with him prior.
I, I've done the one, the last time I contacted him, the last time he contacted, well, we went back and forth, he wanted the, wanted to know the people that we were working with, um, at DEP, so I directed him to Bart Clark.
Right.
And to get those, those names, and, uh, because he wanted to kind of see who was dealing with it so he could work with him, because he knew some people there.
Okay.
That's the last I heard from him.
Yeah, that would be.
I'll have to follow up again.
Yeah, Anthony McCarroll and Bill Richardson were the, at least the DEP groups, maybe more.
Any other questions?
Yes. The one we need to repair.
Yeah.
Is that the wastewater butt?
Yes.
Busy tomorrow?
Yes. Full talk.
So it's next year. Next year. Thanks, Matt.
Good night, Eric.
Good night.
Let's see, let's get building department, uh, highway.
Evening, folks. Okay, let's see. For the month of June, we had sixty-four point seven one tons of garbage. Recycling, we had nineteen point eight nine tons. For the month of June, we continued street sweeping, trimming overgrown limbs. We cut down a locust tree on Lung Terrace that was becoming a safety concern. We teamed up with the water department to cut back the vegetation at Crawford Dam on Fishkill Road to alleviate a blind spot across for the residents of Rocky Road. And we repaired the Memorial Betty Buddy bench at the riverfront and had one brush collection. We made many repairs and upgrades to the iron stairs. We replaced one tread completely, we secured eight others that were loose. We welded two breaks on the east stringer. We welded a bullnose cap on the lower landing. We re-levelled the east stringer before we welded it. We removed the old bluestone steps at the top and replaced with new concrete stairs and granite walls. Then we painted the entire iron portion of the stairs. None of this would have been possible without the help of Carl Farsenda, Adam Hoteling, and especially John Jessica, the Phillips Town Highway Department. As of right now, our demo saw has lost compression and is no longer repairable, so we are shopping for a new one. Zero turn was at Cold Spring Lawn Mower, it's a little bit out of his league, so it's now over at Newberg Power Equipment, which they just called me today. We'll be picking it up tomorrow. And I had Nick from Hatfield Brothers on site multiple times to replace six broken hydraulic lines and replace the rotted oil cooler on the ninety-seven case backup. For the month of July, we are looking to replace two vacancies in our highway department and catch up with where we got fallen behind. Any questions?
The steps, the steps are fantastic.
Thank you. Did you go up and see it?
We have gone up and down and, so much safer.
Yes, it's, um, Johnny was phenomenal, he was with us for two and a half days. Adam came down and helped us dig out the top, get those old bluestone steps out of there, and we put the new concrete ones up top with granite sides for handrails, and everything's good to go.
I don't know if you had a chance to clean that roof off, could you do that?
Already done.
Did you get a chance? But is it done?
Yeah, done yesterday.
I didn't know, I, did you have garbage today?
Yep, yep, we cleaned that one off yesterday and cleaned the gutters in the back.
Super, thank you. For the interviews, we do have an ad in the Journal News that's for a month, I believe, for.
Yeah.
For the employee that we're looking for, we interviewed, Bugsy and I interviewed three guys so far, and we have three more.
Yes. Yeah, the next one, like I said, is Friday at nine thirty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Do you need me to stay for any of this, pavers that?
I want to do just the Robert Newhall man. Robert Newhall.
Oh, the Robert Newhall, yeah, I mean, I don't think we need party for that.
Um, do you need, uh, request pavers nine Main Street, I saw?
No.
Okay, perfect. Folks, have a great evening, be safe.
Thanks, yeah.
Okay, I will scoot back to the police report, Larry is not here. The monthly report, we have, uh, let's see, animal complaints and other, other two, uh, and, let's see, citizen six, false alarm six, fraud one, and since Larry's not here, we can't ask him about that, noise complaints, one, probably a leaf blower, other accidents, one, uh, property found, one. Let's see, type of goals, uh, let's see, hated cases, four, attempt to locate person, one, fire alarm, two, health and safety hazard, one, lookout vehicle, or locked out vehicle, sorry, four, missing person, one, neighborhood dispute, one, officer needing, needs assistance, thirteen, PDAA, I'm not sure what that is, anyone on police department?
That's an auto accident with one of the, with damage or less without.
Six, suspicious persons, three, and V and D complaints, one, total number of calls for the service, fifty-five, year date, three hundred and thirty. Let's see. Rec commission. What's that?
The second page of his report.
Sorry, second of the parking, total number of tickets issued were seventy-one, and total number year-to-date were three hundred and two, these are traffic and parking tickets. Someone want to read rec?
Okay, so, change of meeting date, this is recreation report. Change of meeting date, the recreation commission would like to change their meeting date to the third Wednesday of the month at seven PM. Softball, the village of Cold Spring Soft, the village of Cold Spring Recreation Commission will be working with the Phillips Town Recreation to hold a fun softball tournament on September eleventh and twelfth, and eighteenth and nineteenth at Mayor's Park. Pickup sports at Mayor's Park. The commission will be discussing setting up and publishing a weekly time for pickup sports, basketball, frisbee, et cetera, at Mayor's Park at the next rep commission meeting. The rep commission has questions about the insurance coverage with the village for such an activity. The Putnam County Food and Wine Festival is scheduled for August seventh and eighth. They have secured parking, transportation, and ambulance service. The, the rep commission will have done a walkthrough on the site plan. It's not sure, not clear what today meant, here.
Today is actually today, they did it this afternoon.
Okay. Approved events, Hammond Family, Hammond Family, July twenty-eighth, Putnam County Wine Board to discuss that, Karen Jackson and Jay Cassidy, retirement party, August fourteenth, Dara Van Dunkum, wedding at the bandstand, August twenty-first, Michelle Tarttweeny, wedding at the bandstand, August twenty-eighth, Cynthia Taggiano, Mayor's Park Pavilion, September twenty-fifth, Latrice McQueen, wedding at the bandstand, October twenty-third. Apologies for my mispronounced names, but Tarttweeny was correct. I knew that.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, I'll go to the building department, jumping around, activities, new building permits, uh, application thirteen, building permits issued fourteen. Let's see, C of O six, record searches completed, two complaints we see, four, inspections completed, seventeen, fire inspections, five, HDRB referrals, four, ZBA, one, fees, applications and permit fees collected, eight hundred dollars, record search fees collected, four hundred and fifty, fire inspection fees, a hundred and fifty, for a total of fourteen hundred dollars. Fire company report.
Can I ask you a question about buildings?
Can I ask you a question about buildings? The building report, if you know it?
I just read the building report.
I just have a question about it.
Oh, sure.
Um, how, how is the, are people responding well for the fire inspections? This was, this was the first time she's been doing it in a while and we were trying.
I think it is. I haven't heard any complaints.
It's been going on for at least four months now.
Yeah, I just haven't thought that.
And I think that there have been some pushback by some building owners, but the majority of the building owners or merchants have cooperated. But there has been some pushback.
That's good. Pushback's not good. That's great. Okay, so fire company. Um, I had to, I had to get some clarification on a couple of acronyms today. Twenty-one calls for the month of June, two power line fires, one elevator rescue, six activated fire alarms, three marine incidents in Hudson River, one mutual aid assist to Beacon in the Hudson River, two EMS assists, one electrical hazard, two motor vehicle accidents, um, and one public assist. Um, I spoke with Tom Marigan this afternoon and he talked about all the work you guys have been doing together on the front facade, Dave, and the, the, um, tank and the washer. Um, he's sought bids from John Dugan and Mario Gregorio and is waiting to hear back from them. I'm working with you on the painter and he was to have dropped off, or Pauline was supposed to have dropped off a blacktop bid to Jeff this afternoon.
Jeff didn't get it.
Nope.
Um, sorry, it's been bothering me, the paintings on the side of the building.
It's the, uh, the west, the west side, the exterior west side of the building is leaking, or is it that shape?
The east side.
No, the west side.
And the painting's on the east side.
The painting is on the west side of the building, facing the river, in the backyard of peace in our building.
You're talking about the murals.
Of those, which painting are you talking about?
The painting's on the east side of the building, on the church street side.
I thought you were talking about the painting.
No, paintings.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
The fire hydrant, Cold Spring Fire Company.
I didn't know there was concern on that.
Yeah. So that was the que, the question was, did anybody ask that was okay to do it?
The newspaper said that the kids went to the firehouse. I don't know if they had talked to anyone else.
Okay, so they didn't.
They didn't come to the village. The village is own property, they should have came to us. They didn't.
Gotcha.
I will handcuff those bastards today.
There are a lot of them.
I don't care. I still have a little energy, you know, round them up. Jeff will help.
Jeff will help you?
Yeah.
Good luck.
I, I thought you were referring to the painting, sorry.
Let's play about it.
Let's play.
It's on the east side.
We can go outside, you can smoke.
It's on the east side, oh.
You'll be so agitated.
It's on the east side.
Al, you want to join us?
Not anymore.
On the west side.
A couple of years ago.
Did you really? I didn't know. Good for you.
I thought you were meeting start outside.
Okay, um, sorry, let's see. I think we can actually shuffle my papers and go on to the top one. Okay, just to, I'll do the justice and then, then we'll get to the HCRB. Uh, let's see, fines, forfeited bales, and civil penalties, four thousand dollars. Parking tickets, eighteen hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, civil fees, three hundred. Mandatory state surcharges, twenty-three hundred and fifty-one dollars, for a total of eighty-four hundred and sixty-six dollars. The others. What's that? Yeah, I'll do that, so I'll let get these guys coming out of here. So we have the, uh, HCRB report and then discussion on the map, I believe, will be this part of that.
Yes. Uh, so as far as the monthly report is concerned, in June, we met two times. We reviewed and approved adjustments to, um, a previously approved design for the front stupid two depot square for the retail space. I don't know what it's called now. Uh, we also reviewed and approved the reconstruction of a front porch at Seven Parish Street. We met with the owners of sixty-eight Main Street about their windows, and we met with Trustee Woods about her fence at Eight Furnace Street. In workshop, we met once with the owner of Seventeen Marion Avenue to discuss a proposed garage, and once with the architect of Sixteen Walding Avenue to review updates to, uh, rear guest cottage. In July, we, uh, expect to conclude the reviews of sixty-eight Main Street and Eight Furnace Street and continue the discussion of Seventeen Marion Avenue and Sixteen Walding Avenue. And we have received new applications for an addition on the front facade of Seventeen Parsonage Street, um, an application for replacement windows at Three High Street, for a shop sign at ninety-nine dash one oh one Main Street, and for modifications to the entries at Forty Main Street to accommodate the new retail tenants. And we have also received a request to review, um, alternative windows for a previously approved application at eleven Parish Street. The report that I sent last week was missing ninety-nine one oh one, but I sent a new copy to Jeff for the file. Uh, and, and then there's the map.
What's the signage on ninety-nine one oh one?
It's the old Berkman space. If the new tenant is called a reservoir, we have, we're going to see them on Wednesday given. I mean, it's, it's vinyl signage.
It's a vinyl signage, clay.
Vinyl window signage, but it's quite a lot.
So it's on the window, it's not, it does not protrude beyond the facade of the building?
Uh, I don't believe so. I quickly looked at the application that Jeff sent around, but it looks like it's a vinyl.
Yeah. It's on the window.
White vinyl on the win, on the lower windows, not up on the fancy trunks. Yeah, on the main shop windows. So, um, I sent around this discussion, um, this sort of report on the map that, um, Arlene at the county GIS office prepared for us, and we had a kind of a back and forth with her for a little while, talking about, um, you know, some different things that need to be corrected. Let me find my first page of it, Johnny. So, uh, I guess, I, I, we received some questions about the American Legion space from, um, trustees Early and Murphy. And Marie, you had a question about whether, about the reasoning for using the nine-one-one database, which I asked Arlene about, but I haven't heard back from her. Um, I did notice that on the county e parcel website, they, um, there was one, so there's a little bit of discrepancy because on, um, that e parcel site, they have the tax number and then they also have the nine-one-one street address. You had talked about two, I think one was on Kemble and one was on Fair Street. Twenty-five Fair Street, it, it did have a nine-one-one address on the e parcel and not on our map. On Kemble, it didn't have the nine-one-one address, so I'm asking her just to clarify.
So let's come back to the nine-one-one address. Why would the HTRB choose to use a nine-one-one database address versus the tax map?
So I believe that the street numbers, that, that is the database that she has access to through GIS to apply to this map. We didn't make, we didn't make the choice for one versus the other. We requested that the lots be labeled with the street number just so as a, as a finding tool for people, it'd be easier to find their house on the map. And then in addition to this map, we are going to have a narrative spreadsheet of tax lot numbers and street addresses that people will be able to see on the site.
That'll be huge.
Uh, it's, I mean, it's.
Eight hundred plus parcels.
Yeah, it's just a spreadsheet, line by line.
And, and, but that will not go into the code?
Unless you want it in the code.
I, I don't want.
We were just going to provide it to the clerk and on the website as a, for people to be able to find their houses.
So, so for. So for example, if I look at your map, my street address and my street name and my street address are inconsistent with the Putnam County tax database, with the United States Parcel Service, Mail Service. It's, it's a different street, it's a different street number. So I, I, I don't know why we would choose to use a nine-one-one database versus the tax database.
Well, because most people don't refer to the tax dating database.
But the street.
If somebody goes on the, on the website, they usually have an address, like I know, uh, my address is twenty-three Market Street, so I, I, that's what I'm looking for. And I think what we're trying to do is make it as user-friendly to someone who may not be familiar with everything. And, and realistically, most people don't, the only time that they, uh, refer to the, uh, the tax database is when they pay their taxes, they usually put it on the check.
It's on everybody's village tax bill, town tax bill, county tax bill. But in, in the case of me, it's the wrong street name and the wrong street number.
All right. And so that, I, I mean, if, for discrepancies like that, we, that should be resolved because it, it should be, it should be what is the correct address.
So that's one problem. Second problem is many tax map IDs have multiple street addresses. I can find one instance of that on the map that you provide, one. What about all the rest?
Well, so I, I guess the way that I'm looking at this is the map is here to graphically represent the boundaries of the village and to give people, uh, the ability to find their place. So I think we would need to pay particular attention to the periphery of, and making sure that all of those lots are very clearly labeled, because there are some streets where it goes, it doesn't go all the way to the edge of a, of a corner, you know? It goes through the middle of Orchard Street, it goes through the middle of Locust. But basically, from my perspective, if your parcel is green on this map, regardless of how your lot is labeled, you're in the district. So I think that it's a, we want to make it as accurate as we can, but really, the, whether we do lot numbers or house numbers, it's really just to assist people in finding their property.
So as it turns out, lot numbers are less likely to change, except during subdivision or merger, than are street numbers or street names. So it would seem to me that continuing using the tax map ID, which you refer to in chapter sixty-four a lot, sorry, that was a bland one, I didn't mean that. In chapter sixty-four, in the application to the HTRB, you ask for someone to provide their tax lot ID.
Right, it's on the form, but also the primary way that we review things is by the address.
The primary way that you review things is whatever somebody puts on the building permit. That's how you get your request. And the building permit asks for the tax map ID, if I remember correctly, and the street name and street address.
Okay, but.
Right, and I would imagine most people probably bring their application to Jeff and say, can you help me find my tax lot ID? Because I just moved here and I don't even know what that means. Or on the old map.
Or else, or else somebody is, you know, doesn't live in town or pay any taxes, and they just want some information about whether a certain property is in the district or not.
The, the other issue too is that on the old, on the existing map, this, the blue and, or yellow and blue map that we use, the way that the lots are divided within parcels and within blocks, each lot is assigned a one or two-digit number, which is not the street address, it relates to the last two digits of the tax ID. So it's incredibly complicated and confusing. And we have a lot of people, we have more people who find the existing map to be confusing and difficult because they are thinking that this, you know, whatever, uh, one or two-digit number should be their street address, and it's not. It's just the end, it's just the last digit of their tax number.
Sure. And they're looking for, and I did read for this, um, specifically for the food town lot, where it is forty-one to fifty-one Chapel Street. You argue that you want to make this all part of the district because it is one tax lot. So you're talking there as a tax lot, not as individual, you know, one, two, three, four, whatever, uh, addresses it is. So like, I feel like we're not being consistent. That's the tax lot, that's the way you're looking at what you want in the district.
Can I hop in for a moment, having been part of this discussion? In, we began looking at this map and thinking about how, when I was on the HTRB with Sean and Al, and trying to think about how to make the process of making an application easier for folks. And again, we, we have found that people would often come in with their tax map ID, either not completed or they had to go to Jeff for help. And the thought was that in the design standards book, if they, if there were street addresses on the map and a, a spreadsheet that you could cross-check, you could say, all right, well, I know, I can't, I can find it on the map, or I can't find it on the map, but I know my street number here and in the next column is my tax map ID. So for the common user who doesn't think about tax map numbers and subdivisions and all of the things the way we do, making it more accessible.
That and also all the listings, both in the state as well as the national register, are by street address, not tax lot.
Which, as I know, can change. So why not have both of them present?
I suppose none of this has to do with Fran's specific question, so I will come back to your question after we discuss this.
So there's a question, early on, you, you'd said, it sounded like what you wanted was actually the street addresses or whatever, but the way that they, that the county operates is they use the GPS, is that right? Or use, use the?
According to Sean, they use the nine-one-one database.
The nine-one-one.
The, it's, G I S. G I S is the mapping software.
Yeah.
We requested street addresses for, be applied to the map. I mean, we could very easily remove those and, and the tax lot and just have it be a graphic representation with very little ease in binding it.
I was just asking, it sounded like initially you did want to have those on there, but they're not on there because of the way their system works.
No, no, we didn't want the tax lots. We want, we wanted the map to be drawn showing the tax lots, but we didn't want the tax lot labels because they're long and confusing and they gum up the.
Well, and there are certain lots where you're not going to fit the, the tax lot number in it.
Sorry, that scale, I didn't hear you.
There are lots where you're not going to be able to fit the number in it very easily.
Yes.
Which I think is why on, on the ninety-nine map, there was this, there was this.
shorthand.
Distilling of the lots and then circled and, this is the view of the old map. But you can see how these are, you know, there's, this also has the zoning laws on it too. We removed a bunch of extra information that we didn't think was helpful, but it's, it, we just wanted it to be easier for people to find their houses on first pass. Ultimately, it's the building inspector who decides whether or not the property needs to come for us. She's the one that understands what is within and outside of the district. She's the one that would, or they are the one who would be writing the referrals. This is just a tool for homeowners and property owners. But the benefits of this map, I think, are that because it is able to be produced and reproduced by the county, it will, I would hope, have the most up-to-date information on it, and as lot lines change, or as street houses change, or street names change, they'll be able to generate updated maps much more quickly. And we, and I, there may have been a miscommunication somewhere, but Al and I were also under the impression that there was going to be a new zoning map for the village created by the county, which would match sort of stylistically the format of this map. So we thought that that would be better, that they were a little bit more consistent.
Right. The way that we, we got started on this was Marie got in touch with me and asked if we wanted to have a map as part of the, the ordinance revision, right?
Sorry, let, let's clarify that, and I wanted to clarify that. In the third paragraph, I called you to say that chapter sixty-four referred to a map that was included in the chapter. In the third paragraph, I called you to say that Chapter 64 referred to a map that was included in the chapter.
Yeah.
And there is no map included in the chapter. So I said, "We can do one of two things. We can remove the phrase 'included in the chapter,' or you can include a map in the chapter."
Right.
That was all I asked for.
Right, and I understand that. And the thing that you have to remember is that there is a map which was included with the original ordinance, and that is the 1976 map. That is, that is what is up in Albany right now.
Exactly.
Al, excuse me, I think I have a copy of that that is not watermarked that I need to give to Jeff. It came from your house to my house, and it needs to go to Jeff.
But that is, that is the map that is part of the ordinance that is up in Albany. When they, when they passed the legislation back in 1976, they sent up that map. And all we would like to do is really bring it up to speed and clarify, because that 1976 map is very inaccurate. The 1999 map, which Beatty and Watson prepared, that was strictly a convenience because that was when we were doing the original design standards. And so we wanted to have a clearer map that people could use in order to find whether or not their particular properties are in the district or not. And so Glenn took his original map and overlaid it on a zoning map. And that was, that was the genesis of this 1999 map.
Okay, back to, so the American Legion. I disagree with including the American Legion in the district.
Could I just answer the question about Food Town? So that was, sorry, that question just came first, that's how I wanted to make sure we answered it. That, if you look on the report, I have a copy of the, you know, a zoom in of the 76 map, where there's this little corner taken out of it. It kind of got a little bit enlarged on the 1999 map. I've included the e parcel map, I mean, you're all familiar with that kind of back corner of Food Town.
Yes.
It looks like there's some sort of like a paper street on the, on the county tax map, which is on here, but is not sort of part of the lot. And in this map from, this reformatted map that we got from the county, it is a single tax lot with the multiple addresses across the front.
Yeah, I can't find any, the blog that you have, sorry, in your document. I can't find any map that represents that street at the corner of Food Town.
I think that it's kind of like this weird, because actually on the, which we'll talk about next, they have like the driveways with the ambulance drawn on their, on the county tax map, which, which I didn't include, but it's here. So I don't know why the county has this weird little access point to the side of Food Town, included on, on the e parcel map. But to answer Trustee Murphy's question, it is, the county considers the entire thing to be one contiguous lot, one single lot.
I was just making a point that it would be core in instances like that, rather than having street addresses to have a tax lot. There is one lot, and that's how you would consider, that's the way you want to have it in the, in the HDRB under, in the district.
Right, well, it's still drawn as one lot, it's just identified with the individual street addresses. But it's still, but the...
It's the one lot that you want to, rather than, because, you know, so it's sort of as an offset of the argument that says you want an individual address, so it's probably you want the whole lot, because that's what's in the district. You're not going to break it up, you know, people.
Right, again, the addresses were just to help people find their property. It has nothing to do with whether or not it was included on the map or not included on the map.
The, relative to 4151 Chestnut Street.
Yes.
Oh. The text states that, as Fran pointed out, the lot is highly visible from Loretta Rest. That should have no bearing. Loretta Rest is private property.
It's a national, it's national, individual listed, national.
It was so, but there's, it's so wide, it is not visible from, sorry, it is not a public right of way. So referring to the private property formerly known as the Loretta Rest, formerly known as the Grove, why would you, why would you make that a reason for including or excluding?
So in other words, if you're saying that, then you're saying everything that's visible from Loretta Rest should be included.
The Food Town lot.
And that's not really, that's not an argument for including or not including.
I think that the thing that you have to remember is that the original map, the one with the water stain, that was prepared as negotiating, you know, a start of the negotiations concerning the adoption of the district. It was never really meant to be, you know, a final description. And so I think that they weren't very careful as far as how they were drawing stuff.
Or not arguing whether or not that stupid little street, which doesn't exist, should or should not be in the district.
Well, as far as this report is concerned, I was just trying to draw your attention to the, to the deviations between the three maps. Its proximity to the Loretta Rest, which is an individual landmark, would certainly be something that we would consider if this property were ever to be redeveloped. It's, it's part of how we would look at it.
Your code doesn't ever say that anything that's invisible, you know, visible from another landmark needs to have X, Y, or Z.
But our code require, our code requires us to look at a proposal in its, in the context of the neighborhood that it's in and its, and its effect on other properties within the district.
I see the rest of your argument, you know, it's the entrance to the district, it's a 20th century commercial development, all that makes sense. The fact that it's visible from Loretta Rest, to me, just should sort of be taken out of that. It's not part of the...
Okay, well, but this is a, this is just our own internal discussion, so I will cross it out.
So back to the American Legion.
Yes, so I did print out, I also, I did print out a copy of, I understand that there's part of the Legion property which is in Nelsonville. There's part of, there's a second Legion property which is in Nelsonville. This is the county tax map. I couldn't tell you why there is a differentiation at the county level between what they consider Cold Spring to be and Nelsonville, which is this hard black line versus this dotted line. I don't know why there's a difference there. But our map, our new map and all of our maps have ended at that line anyway. So anything that's being built in Nelsonville would not come before us, it would not come before our board, it's not part of our jurisdiction.
Right, great.
Yeah, and basically what we were trying to do is just straighten things out, clarify it, because, you know, as you can tell in Glenn's 1999 map, he ran the district boundaries through the middle of lots. And, and trust me, that resulted in problems, you know, people doing strange things to avoid having to come before us. I mean, you know, it's...
Right. So my point is that in identifying the entire American Legion lot as, as a part of the district, the entire American, which is not the way it currently is, you're identifying a property which contains very little of the buildings that are situated on that property. The majority, let me say 80% of the buildings are in the Village of Nelsonville. So given that that's the case, and you want to avoid bisecting properties and bisecting structures, why would you propose to expand the designation of that property?
We're not expanding it, we're, sorry.
As I look at, I see it expanded.
What we were trying to do is just, as we said, we were reacting to the fact that the previous map had gone through the middle of lots. And so we were trying to avoid that. And, you know, but realistically, if you feel it's a problem, I have no problem putting the line back to where it is. Wherever you want it.
Well, the line, it depends upon whether it's the 76th line, the 99 line, or the 21st line. The 76th line bisected the property.
Right.
The 99...
Well, I, I cannot be certain that it bisected the property because it's unclear exactly what the border of the 76th line is. The 99 line clearly bisects the property, unless it was two properties in 1989, which I don't know if that was the case.
No.
But as of now, as far as the county is concerned, it's a single lot.
Yeah, the one in Cold Spring is a single lot.
Yes, yes, there's...
Right, and, and...
It's two lots, but we're only talking about the one in Cold Spring.
That's right. And you also say that they are non-contributing, the structures are non-contributing. So in my opinion, that should not be expanded to encompass the entire American Legion lot.
I don't think you're proposing an expansion. What you're proposing is a line correction on the map. And it sounds like, I think, Marie, what you're asking for is for the, for the line to go outside the boundary of that particular parcel on the, on the map, on the map correction.
So that the entire lot currently labeled 14 on the green map would be outside of the district. It would come down between the Dahlia House and the Legion property and then, and then onto the other side of Cedar Street to what is number 10 Locust, goes to this lot.
I would think that makes more sense, because the entirety of the property is not where, not in the village.
Well, okay, but...
And I will, go ahead.
I agree. I, I, it, the entirety of the property is in the village, because it is a separate tax lot, and that's the only thing that we would be including. But yes, the buildings themselves go over the boundary into Nelsonville.
The, that property goes back far, and there's a lot of, that property is, and I can tell you, because I know that the members of the American Legion just did some renovations in there, they redid their kitchen. Bill Bajowski was the one who said it was his responsibility to give them the clearance on that, because that building is in Nelsonville, and he gave them the okay. That's a Nelsonville building authority, and it's in Nelsonville. Most of it is in Nelsonville, so it doesn't...
That very well may be the case, but there is a lot that exists within Cold Spring. Maybe it's in front of the building, and maybe it could be sold off for development. We don't know what could happen to that lot. But do we want to remove that lot and the future of that lot from the district entirely?
Yeah, because, I mean, at this point, how do you tell a landowner, whether it's an organization or a part of, well, the front part of your lot belongs to us, the back part of your lot belongs to them, and so if you want to do something in the back, you do this, and if you want to do something in the front, you do that.
Because it's two, because it's two separate lots on the tax map. So maybe it's a property owner who owns both of them.
No, in, in the past, we've had a situation before, because, you know, the, the, the house next to Town Hall is part in Cold Spring, part in Nelsonville.
The big house behind it, on the shell of the front.
And ultimately, the reason that they placed the house, which they did, was so that...
No, this is, this has nothing to do with us.
Agreed, agreed. That, that, I think there are five pieces of property that make up that, they are...
They both belong to them.
Robbie, can we have one cover, sorry?
Do they have one tax map?
No, they have two. There's this one and this one.
I'm sorry, I don't...
All right, so what, what, I guess we're willing to accept whatever direction you give us. If you want tax, tax lot 14 to come out, because it is nebulous, I think that we would be willing to accept that. I think that would be great.
Yeah. Just another question sort of on the side. If any of these properties that are not currently in the district, and we decide that we want them in the district, what is the communication with the landowner? That says, you know, do they have a chance to say yea or nay? Or do we just say, "Hey, you know, we've just decided your property's in the district"? How does that work?
Well, the thing is, is that none of the properties that we're showing here were not, or rather, the properties that we're showing here were all in the district to begin with.
Or a portion of those properties are in the district.
There are some where there was a portion that was out.
Right.
So, I mean, we can sort of officially notify them, because I think we have a couple of them where we, we took them out, because the lot line was in the middle of the lot, and we figured that there's no reason to...
Marion and Benedict were, and fifty Campbell.
So when I read Chapter 64, as you and I discussed yesterday, when I read 64-6, any modification to the district, or delineation of the district, requires an application to be submitted, and then there must be a public hearing.
Right.
And the owners of the properties affected must get a certified letter. And 62 days after the close of the public hearing, it is, I guess, assuming, assuming that there is agreement at the public hearing, then that becomes official. So in reading, my reading of Chapter 64, they can't just change it, they have to have a public hearing.
Except, I don't think that we're changing anything. I think we're clarifying it, because realistically, the only thing that has the force of law is this.
And in my discussions with the State Historic Preservation Office, talking about all of these issues, they agreed that they were not changes, that we were not adding properties, we were clarifying the boundaries.
I'm sorry, you really are adding portions of properties.
Right, but if you're adding, just a question, if you are adding, what's, what's happened in the past, Al, with houses that are properties that are divided in half? Does the property inspector refer them or not refer them? When it literally goes through the structure, or the line has gone through the structure?
Well, we've never had an instance where a boundary line went through a piece of a structure. It was just through a lot. And we've had instances where the owner built his structure outside the boundary, so he wouldn't have to comply with the requirements.
But now you have ten Locust Ridge where you see the boundary goes between, down the middle.
I agree that with Marie, what she described as the process, if we're changing anything. But my feeling is, is that this is a very poor map. And this is what we are working from. All we're doing is we're just relating that to actual lots.
But the effect for, the effect for someone whose parcel is impacted by that is, is, from their perspective, is a change. It might be simply clarifying that it goes to the rest of their property line, but it is still, it is still an impact on their property, it affects their property. And from that perspective, I think that you're right, Marie.
Well, but here, let me, let me ask this. We've got, what, four instances where we're, you know, clarifying things, am I correct?
Well, not including the Foundry Preserve, because that was an actual clerical...
Well, let's include the Foundry Preserve, because, you know, realistically, the Foundry Preserve under all of the maps, there's this little piece up here, which was excluded. But the Foundry Preserve was an individual nomination to the National Register. When it was individually nominated, included the entire, the entire parcel. So, you know...
What happened when they sold all the portion of their parcel?
What?
It remained within the district.
But they were individually identified, correct, as a national historic property?
We're talking about Kemble?
The Kemble?
I'm talking about the, the entire property, which then a portion of it was sold to, the Kemble portion was then sold. So is the Kemble portion in the national district, or is it in the local?
All of it is in the national district.
All of it's in the national district.
The, the, the local, the, the national, go ahead.
Can I see that one map? Do you have the yellow?
This one?
Yeah. While you guys are.
The, um, no, sorry. We take that back.
All is loc, all was, was loc. You need to explain that, what SHPO advised on the national.
That's different. On the, yes, the Foundry. The Foundry Preserve was, is an individual landmark that extends above, oh, this one.
Above 90.
Above 90.
Got you, got you.
That is separate from the Kemble property, which is in the local district. That was also owned by Sina Cusson. But those were already separate lots.
Ah, okay.
So, so on our, on our 1999 map, you see that there are separate lots. The 20th Boulevard is within the local district.
Right.
And the Foundry Park Preserve is within the national district.
And then the, the yellow property extends into the blue property? They, they did a boundary line adjustment?
Oh, possibly, let me see.
I know they did. They did a boundary line adjustment.
Oh, it looks like they took this, this is, this is, this is the county map.
It's this, it's this piece right here. But they, they, they took what was the, the boundary and they, they, they.
Subdivided.
Yeah, so this property is.
It was a boundary line adjustment, not, not a subdivision. But the effect is, is similar to a subdivision. So the question is, these, this is national. This was national.
Mm-hmm.
This was local.
Mm-hmm.
Then, does this say, stay local? And does this piece become national?
I would imagine that unless the Foundry Park has refiled their application with the National Register, this would remain within the local district.
Okay.
It's important, go ahead, Al.
Yeah, let me clarify business about the national and the local. When the village sent their legislation up to Albany, they created a historic district, described by this. They have, the, the village itself never nominated any portions of it to the National Register. The portion, the portion of the district that was nominated to the National Register was actually done by, I think it was Sina Cusson. It was actually nominated well after this was established. And the same thing is true of the Foundry Preserve. And there are other individual properties throughout that are, that were nominated. The village had nothing to do with that. So the only thing that the village, this map really should describe, which is the one that the legislation refers to, is this clarified.
And the designation doesn't, those, those two entities, those two separate nominations, does, the status of those designations doesn't change. The portion that is previously represented as yellow stays listed nationally. Portion that is represented blue stays listed with the state locally. The designation isn't changing. What, what changed, which I'm sure you'll get to at some point in your discussion, is that when we were updating the designs, we updated the ordinance, which, which discusses a district. As Al has pointed out, it refers to the single district, of which the national is a subset. And then when we got the grant and applied for, uh, to update the design standards, the state recommended that the disparity in the standards between the two districts should not, should not be.
Shouldn't be any difference between.
There shouldn't be a, a materials approach. That there, that there should not be such disparity from, in one portion of the district to another. And they asked us to sort of find, find a balance between the two that met the, met the, met the design requirements of the whole district and not just segments. Can you explain that better?
There's not a architectural distinction between the full local district and the National Register subsection of it. It's not as, it's not like in New York where districts are created because of some common architectural element, regardless of where they are located in the city. This was a, it was, it was just old, old policy and old preservation thinking which has evolved. And now it is the recommendation of SHPO that the districts be treated the same.
See, I understand, and I think I said this to you, if I didn't, I meant to. I understand that they get treated the same. But I, I don't sort of agree with the fact that we're meshing up one map because I think people need to know that their particular property is an historic versus the local district.
Right, so.
So that doesn't show here.
So that's something else that we talked about doing. And that's also going to be reflected in the database. We're going to identify buildings that are just in the local district, buildings that are in the local and national district and any individual landmarks. It, as, as far as the actual nuts and bolts of the homeownership is concerned, it really only, the distinction is really only significant if people wanted to apply for tax credits. But our, we're ineligible for, as of now and probably for the foreseeable future because the income is too high in the area.
And, you know, I think if I found a building that was in the national district, I'd want to know.
Yeah, certainly. And they'll, they'll remain identified in the narrative breakdown.
I'm going to back up and ask you a question. I know, don't hit me. The American Legion Building, the, the property number is 34 on the 1999 map. First blue property there. I think it says 34.
The Dahlia House.
Is that the Dahlia House 34?
No. No. The Town Hall is 37.
Well, this was the other confusing thing, too. It says American Legion on that white lot. But the actual buildings are in, closest to that lot 34.
Well, the, the buildings spread across, they are actually spread the whole width of the property because you've got the ambulance corps and the American Legion. That's all.
Right, which are right next to each other.
And the ambulance corps is on the property line, pretty much. There is the driveway and plenty of space between the American Legion Building and the Dahlia House. So 34 is, if 34 is the Dahlia House, then none of this property was ever in the district?
No, 34 is not the Dahlia House. This is, this is the Dahlia House. This is, this is Town Hall. That's the Dahlia House. And then there is, this is, this is what I'm trying to say is that on this 1999 map, there's this, there's this line drawn in between the two. One is, one is labeled American Legion. But really, this is all one lot.
Lot 34.
Oh, sorry, I zoomed in a little too close. You can actually see the street on this one, sorry, but.
So this is okay.
Yeah, so that's all one lot. But that's, that's what makes it so confusing because the, it looks as if this is referring to the entire American Legion site. But really, it's this whole property.
Okay, I can find 34, I can find everything on the map. And because I can use the tax ID from here to find it. So if I go back to the map. 34.
Yeah, so I think that like, this, this is the, this is the ambulance building? And this is the Legion building?
When you're saying before you're referring to the final two numbers of the, of what would have been the final two.
But it's not all the way over here because this is the, this is the end of that. This is the entrance to the trail right here.
Okay.
Probably right here.
Yeah, the building right here.
So, folks, 34 is 10, 10 Cedar Street. Owner, George A. Casey, American Legion. 35 is Town of Philstown, Cedar Street, number two.
That's the Dahlia House.
37, 37 is not on Cedar Street. It is the Town Hall, it's on Main Street.
Can you tell, is 34 cross Mountain Avenue, Marie?
Hold on a second, let me pull up the, the map. 34, I can tell you, is across the mountain.
Oh, you mean go to the other side of that intersection?
It's 338 feet wide, 94 feet deep. It goes. 34 goes from the Dahlia House to the other side of Mountain Avenue.
Okay, so it does go slightly. So, yeah, so the ambulance corps is like right.
Like this?
I, I don't.
Oh, that one's, that one's zoomed in. But that, you're, I'm sure you're probably looking at the same map if you're on the county tax site. Because that's what that screenshot's from.
34.
Is where the drive.
This is, this.
38 is that house that's next to the.
34 is that one, yes.
No, and then that, that Dahlia.
Oh, oh, the residential.
This is the Town Hall.
Built, built again. Because, which is not in our village. So we're not concerned about that one.
That's right.
Just a slipper of the garage.
So, Marie, it sounds like, it sounds like in U2, Marie asking if the map should be referenced or not, drove you all to a process that is ending up doing what needed to be hap, needed to be done for a long time, which is cleaning up the map.
Yeah.
And now it's a matter of taking those parcels. It sounds to me like it's a matter of taking those few parcels that have some sort of map border adjustment, informing those residents, having a conversation about that, and, and moving from there.
I, I think that the issue is, is whether or not we need to go through that process where we're changing.
Yeah.
Say, okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm not finished yet. There's the specific updates. 27 Marion, three Benedict, five Benedict, seven Benedict, and 50 Kemble. So, I found the logic in the text. South of the Foodtown Plaza, development of Benedict Road, created a number of awkwardly shaped keyhole lots extending down the hill to Kemble Avenue. As it turns out, only, on Benedict Road, only two of the properties extend down to Kemble Avenue. One owned by the village and one owned by someone else. The, uh, wrong map, sorry, guys.
But now you can get to that map with our new boosters.
I'm sorry.
Because we can in this room now. Have internet access. Trying to bring a little joy here.
We're talking technology.
So, two of the properties went, go from Benedict Road to Kemble Avenue. One of them owned by the village and one owned privately.
So what's the portion?
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that the lots themselves extend down. I was saying the assortment of lots.
Were a number of, so, okay. Created a number of awkwardly shaped keyhole lots extending down the hill to Kemble Avenue, which were bisected by the pre-existing map of the district. So the pre-existing map of the district identified 38, 37, and 9 as being not in the district.
As being partially.
Partially in the district.
Yes, partially in the district. And now, so 38, which one is now 38?
Essentially, all of the ones that you're looking at, we, we decided to move the line to the left and, and remove the entire lot from the district.
Okay, so if I look at the 2021 reformatted map, the district line is between, I guess that's 46?
It's this, this line here.
Yeah, it's between 46 Kemble and 50 Kemble, which was that property you identified that doesn't have a, a number. But it does have an address. It just doesn't on our map.
Yes, yes. I think people live there, they would like to know that they have an address.
And it goes up, um, behind those other.
So what happens when it goes up, when 46 goes east, it hits into a, a property on Marion?
19 Marion, which is, which remains within the district.
Yeah, what happened here, and this was.
It's a dogleg. Is, is the dogleg on Marion? Does it have the stone cottage at the bottom of the dogleg?
That's over on.
That's further down. That's number five Marion?
Yeah, that's Rose.
That's number nine.
Huh? It's not Judith Rose's?
I'm sorry, nine, you're right. I'm too far left.
It, it just looks like, that, that seems like it makes sense. It looks like you just moved it, you took some portion of those three properties, moved the line, adjusted it to the north. And now they're not in the district.
Right, because it's part.
And the reason it looks a little bit different is that the owner of this lot, of lot 37, subdivided the lot because it was a woman that owned it and she sold off parts of the lot to her children.
So, so there is now an easement on, on 37 that, right. Because I can see it here. She owned, three, three lots were subdivided. Thirty, in tax map ID language, 37.1, 37.2, and 37.3. And there must be an easement on 37.1 to get to 37.2 because otherwise it's landlocked.
Landlocked, right.
Okay. And then just north of 37.2 is an L-shaped dogleg coming off of Marion going down the hill to the, to that. Okay. So, so for some of these, so for the three parcels where Benedict heads from Marion toward the river, the 38 and 37 now are totally out of the district. And 9 is totally out of the district. And I believe that's street, it's 50 Kemble.
Mm-hmm.
And 37 has been broken up into 37.1, 37.2, and 37.3.
And they're all out of the district.
And they're all out of the district.
And realistically, you, they wouldn't have been referred anyway because it's backyards that aren't visible. They're, that are mostly not visible from public rights of way. So it's sort of silly to have them in in the first place.
The, um, up above, um, into the street, it looks like a number 14. Above 36, above 38, is that piece of property all in or all out? It looks like it's all in at this point.
That's the, that's the corner of the Foodtown lot.
That's the Foodtown lot.
And it's not in?
It is.
It is.
It is. It is.
It is in the new one.
So that's the corner of Foodtown.
If you just flip over onto the other.
These three right there.
No, I'm sorry, this was 38.
No, she was talking about this, this section right here.
Oh.
So actually, if you flip around, if you flip around to the back of that page where we're talking about Foodtown, you can see it better. Zoomed out better, or repositioned better to see that whole area. And how the line moves from Foodtown. Down. Kristy Woods, do you have any questions?
No.
But have you learned something?
Yes.
But I have to tell, 12, I guess, almost.
So the property that was identified on Fair Street, that didn't have a property number?
Yeah, I wrote, so I wrote to Arlene. It's number 25 Fair Street.
Yeah.
I wrote to Arlene about it. And I will see if there's a, what the issue is. Because if you, if you look on the, on the e-parcel, it does have a street number. It could potentially just be that the lot is so narrow that the street number didn't fit.
The driveway?
The, uh, yes.
It's the driveway.
The end of the, of the lot.
Yeah.
But, but I don't, I mean, there was, there was an issue. The, the way that the street numbers are exported and added to the map, they, you know, we can't adjust how close they are to the lot lines. We, we ask, we can send to them, if that's not possible, it's just because of the way that the. it's just because of the way that the whole.
Now, another, I'm not sure whether I, I mentioned it, there are three condo properties.
Yes, I also asked her whether it's possible to add, to manually add a label to each of those. One of them's outside of our district, so.
Right.
We wouldn't be reviewing it anyway, but, um, I asked whether she could add a manual label to Forge Gate, Spring Brook, Butterfield, and Chestnut Ridge.
And, and as, as I mentioned before, there are a number of properties that have two street addresses associated with them. I can find twenty-two, twenty-four, um, Garden Street, that's good. Eighteen is eighteen-twenty Garden Street, just as an example.
Yeah.
And, and, and there are, that, that, that's not the only, um, um, set of, of properties. You at least got twenty-nine, thirty-one Rock Street on there.
Yeah, I think that there's, there's a couple that are labeled, I mean, the, the, it looks like this map is very, I will not engage. Is very similar to the county tax map zoomed out slightly, so.
Nicely done, nicely done.
But again, I, I, I think that we are, we are limited, we are at once benefiting from this great technology advancement, which gave us this map, we are also somewhat limited by it, I will review these concerns with Arlene. I think ultimately, if there are a smattering of parcels that are missing their street addresses, but they are labeled correctly, either green or white, it, it shouldn't derail the whole project because again, it's a, this is just meant to be a tool to help people find their properties and we'll maintain a written database of exactly which properties are in the district, their street addresses or tax lots. Some of them are co-listed where they're, we actually have them in our database twice because corner buildings or whatever, you know, they, somebody's put a number on the door that isn't a real address, so.
I've seen that happen.
We're, we're going to have, this will be supplemented with a much more exhaustive list of properties.
So here's a question for you, since a map is to be included in Chapter sixty-four, the, the size of the street numbers on that map will probably not be very visible as a hard copy in the document. Is it possible that you could, that Arlene could do a map for you that doesn't have street numbers? And then the map with street numbers, does that make any sense? My point is that when, when we look at the size of the map that will be printed in Chapter sixty-four, does it make sense to have street numbers on there or not, because I don't think they'll be visible.
Uh, she did offer to make a map that was scaled to letter size and, which stayed half by eleven.
Eight and a half by eleven.
I mean, this is printed at eleven by seventeen and it's, but I don't know if this exceeds the possibilities of.
But if it were to say eight and a half by eleven, you're not going to be able to read.
Tiny.
Oh, sure, so you're seeing it.
Yeah, I would take, I think you're right, Marie, you'd take them along.
It gets very busy.
I, I think, I think that we should take a leap into the future and just assume that people will look up the, uh, digital version of them.
I mean, if you, if you have.
The clerk is thrilled.
If you have the charts that you talk about with the addresses and the tax laws and the local and historic districts and so on and so forth, it's a good reference.
I'd also just like to say, since I've been sort of quiet on all this, that as, um, as a newer homeowner, that it would have been very helpful to have something where I could look up the information regarding my property because I, I wouldn't have known a tax lot from a, I don't even know what to reference, that's different from that, so.
Right.
I think this, this is a great tool and I.
Well, our next project, once this is done, I, is, uh, when our design guidelines are finalized, we, uh, would like to send a mailing to all of the residents who live within the district, alerting them to the new.
Yes.
Reminding them that they live in the district and alerting them to.
Perhaps also to the real estate companies in the area that.
That is a, that is a discussion that we have been having for quite a while. And we've also actually spoken to, um, the clerk about possibly having some sort of a, something that would be included if anyone were to do a title search through Village Hall.
I mean, when we bought our house, which was over twenty years now, we, we got the old design standards book. And then we came down, we spoke to our area at the time, I still have it. It, it was, you know, priceless because it, you know, it gave us, you know, I wasn't, you know, you sort of know when you buy in a new area that you have to ask questions, so this gave us a little advances and of course I was here asking a lot of questions. Pre, pre-technology when I could look everything up.
The one thing which, uh, that, once we get finished with the design standard is, we had at one point going through and had a, a survey done of the village, uh, you know, listing all of the character defining features. This is through a grant from SHPO. And we need to process that and we also became more familiar with the SHPO database, which is called Chris. And, uh, we're starting to use that a lot more and, uh, it's something which we probably would try to make at least people aware of its existence, so that if they do want to look up information about their properties, then, you know, that, I would think that would be a very good source.
Could you put a link right on the page, right?
Yeah, I mean, I've used it looking at this, it's, it's nice.
Yeah, it's a little confusing right now because it was populated by the, that nineteen eighty-two survey that Al spoke about earlier, so it is mostly only buildings that are in the national district, so, so people who are in the local district might not necessarily have survey forms from the seventies, so it's not a perfect database, but we're hoping that we can add more things to it. Andrea Connor is, um, certified to add things on her behalf, so we will start to do that.
Quick question, the, uh, the map you referred to says the binding map is the original map, is that?
The nineteen seventy-six map.
That, so that's the one, so is this, is there a way to update that, so this is now the binding, legally binding map that you referred to?
If it's part of the ordinance revision that is sent up the board, then I would think that replaces that.
Okay, and that hasn't been done before?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, the nineteen eighty-nine map was never adopted as anything other than just a tool.
It, it was adopted as a, a reference, uh, reference material for people in the district. It was part of the, um, design standards, so it was something to help people understand what they needed to do in their respective, uh, parts of the district.
I see the last, I don't know, five or six years as having been tightening, tightening all of the areas around the historic district in terms of documentation and tools and professionalizing them and getting them right. The ordinance update, now the design standards, and this is great to have a new map. So it's just stuff that was neglected for a long time and is finally being dealt with correctly.
So as we, uh, is it my understanding that we're pulling the American Legion building out of, or that will apply out of the district? Did we agree on that or?
We would like to, or at least. Is there any other?
Okay, I, I guess let me ask the, the question specifically, having seen all of this, do you, how would you like for us to proceed, you want us to proceed with the, the process described in Chapter sixty-four?
I would. I would, I'd like to see the HDRV conform to the HDRV's chapter.
I feel that we, we are already conformed because we're not changing things, we're just clarifying, we're updating. Because you have to admit, the nineteen seventy-six map is not exactly a very good.
I, I don't disagree that seventy-six isn't great, that ninety-nine isn't great, but when it comes to changing the boundaries, which is what sixty-four, there's six talks about.
Okay.
So if we're talking about, and you're asking, do we want you to conform, does that mean that everything is not in the nineteen, whatever this is, seventy-six map? Any changes from there have to be dealt with because this is the last thing that's been filed out?
But it looks like.
So I would assume that's a, I would assume that's a massive number of changes, not just.
Based on the, no, based on the conversation that I had with SHPO, we can adopt this map as the contemporary interpretation of our nineteen seventy-six map to, and adopt it as our map. The only time that we would need their review is if any of the properties that we are talking about exist within the national district and none of them do. We're only talking about issues that are on the periphery of the districts, or they only exist in the local district.
And it's these that you've identified, these, whatever it is, five, that you've identified in your packet.
Right, those are the only, those are the only discrepancies.
So you don't have to do a massive amount of.
What, we.
No, and that's why I put together this to draw your attention to those areas because it's the only place where the, where the, the nineteen ninety-nine map was not on a lot, not on a contemporary lot line.
So it's fourteen Cedar, ten Locust, forty-one to fifty-one Chestnut, uh.
Twenty-seven, not forty-one to twenty-one, forty-one Chestnut, it's just, if it's anything, it's just fifty-one Chestnut.
Okay, that part, that, that parcel.
That parcel, yeah.
But I, as it turns out, it's one parcel. Food Town is one parcel.
Yes.
So it's just a.
And they, and we've met with them, we reviewed them as of, anything that happens in that, just not.
Yeah, parcel, so forty-nine point nine dash one dash one four.
Hold on a second.
Represents that, that parcel.
Hold on a second, give me that again.
Forty-nine point nine.
Wait a minute, let me, let me get to. Forty-nine point nine.
Dash one.
Dash one.
Dash fourteen.
Dash fourteen.
Gives us, turn around.
Since no, no parcels match that description. Oh, it was timing me up, you're gonna have to do it again, I'm sorry.
So the only question that I think we're back and forth with is the American Legion plot.
Forty-nine, forty-nine, dash.
Yeah, well, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Am I correct that the direction that you would like us to take is to exclude it?
That would be my vote, I don't know about the rest of the board.
That would be my vote, looking at the original map, I would think that's right to. I don't find the original map confusing, actually.
Yeah, okay, so just can I read the addresses into the, read the addresses into the record then so we're clear about which parcels we're talking about?
Yes.
Um, so what Marie just confirmed as tax map forty-nine point nine dash one dash one four is the Food Town Lot. Fourteen Cedar Street.
Can I stop right there, just for a second, if, if this is actually the legal map that we're going back to, there's, there's no ambiguity with the Food Town property, it's, it's, it's coded, it's colored, it's, it's there. It's like, if you're looking at this, there's no, it's, there's no, is no way that this is the property, it's, it's.
It's this little.
That little square.
It's what?
It's that tiny square.
That tiny little square right there.
And the map.
Which somehow got enlarged in nineteen ninety-nine, so that's why we are addressing it.
And since that map has been in use for so long, it's sort of, right, you have to, we have to correct what people have been using since nineteen ninety-nine. So again, the Food Town Lot, fourteen Cedar Street, which is the American Legion, and it sounds like the recommendation of the board is to shift that out, right?
Ten, ten Cedar Street.
Forty-nine point five dash two dash thirty-four, for clarity.
Ten, ten Cedar Street.
And then ten Locust Ridge, which is forty-nine point five dash two dash twenty-six. And then a collection on Benedict and Marion. Twenty-seven Marion, three Benedict, five Benedict, seven Benedict, and fifty Campbell Avenue are, are impacted by moving the line off those parcels. And then West Point Foundry Preserve, that is what? That's just the reformatting of the map?
That's just, uh, that is simply including the entire parcel, which has not changed shape or size since it was added, actually, the Foundry Park Preserve was added to the national register before the, our historic district was.
So the, the sum, the sum is that, that multiple properties come out and one property is clarified from being this, the, the line going down the center of the house to going on the full property. The rest is all removals.
Right.
And on the map, you're going to do your best to get as many street addresses entered as possible, including situations where a parcel has multiple street addresses in it.
To the best of our ability, we will do the best.
And I certainly can't help with putting things on the map, but I can certainly provide you with information from the tax database as to what the street addresses are.
And I, and I'll.
And you're gonna fix mine, right? My parcel's gonna get corrected.
What's, what's wrong with your parcel?
Take a look at, at it says, it looks like it extends.
Well, I, you know, and the thing is, is you told me that the zoning map isn't finished yet. I would think that, you know, whatever, whatever we're going through here probably should also apply to the zoning map.
The zoning map doesn't deal with, um, the boundaries of the historic district.
And, and, and no, I'm not talking about the boundaries of, of the district, I think that ultimately, the, you know, how it's configured, because what we're trying to do is develop tools that somebody can use, somebody who's not necessarily a cartographer or, uh, you know, a landscape engineer, uh, you know, be able to go and find the property and see what zone it is.
So where yours looks like, when I look at the map larger, it looks like it is identified as sixty-three Morris as opposed to a Grandview Terrace address.
That's right, I'm not sixty-three Morris. I am, and I'm not forty-one Morris. Today, Jeff was doing a record search and I came up as an owner of forty-one Morris F, which at one point in the past was true. That was the street number given to a parcel. And then that Morris Avenue was renumbered and forty-one Morris became a different Morris Avenue address. And then I changed the orientation of my house.
This would be interesting, it was in ten after nine.
Yes.
I, I will be honest, I, I really was only paying attention, excuse me, to the properties within the district, so I didn't even look to see how accurate.
I didn't, I didn't look either.
That area of this.
I was about ready to get sent in, oh my goodness.
Well, you made me look and I found one on East Belvedere, there's one unlabeled between seven and ten, East Belvedere. And then that, I think Marie already referred to twenty-five Church, which is in the district.
Seven and ten can't be true.
Well, look here, it says seven and then it's this, it's this corner parcel and there's an unmarked parcel in between the two.
It, it's an, it's an undeveloped parcel, so it doesn't have a street address.
But you'll see also like on Cracks I Drive, across from my house, there's, because that's all one property. I, I think some, some, I mean, I don't know, when did we get nine-one-one service around here?
Sometime between fourteen, forty-one Morris Avenue and sixty-three Morris Avenue.
How do you access ten, right here, that little driveway?
Thank you so much.
So we'll put together an application to our own board for modifications to this map and we will.
There's a, there's a whole process.
The public hearing. According to.
We will follow our, our own requirements.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you guys.
You've done this amount of work, thank you so much.
Back to the, uh, my own leisure, I can't do this, because everyone else is at their leisure. First, I forgot something in the police report, so I'm gonna go back to that. I just wanted to read, just for clarification, because I misspoke, uh, last time we were talking about the license plate readers and I said they came from the sheriff's department, it's not true. So Larry just sent me a thing on the LPR cameras, so I'd like to just read this, what he had sent me. The license company for the plate readers is RECOR and they provide the licenses. Two, the data is collected and sent to Westchester Putnam Real Time Crime Center. And this, I believe, is the crime center, this is all of Westchester, all police reports to the center. And so it's not like a private company, which I thought it was, or that's how I thought it sounded. And the information is stored there for two years as per state law. Three, only authorized personnel can access any information, it is only used for criminal investigations or locating missing persons, Amber Alerts. Four, it cannot be used for issuing tickets. Five, we requested the monies for the camera from the Putnam DA Asset Forfeiture Program, that's where I was mistaken. Six, it takes a picture of. Six, it takes a picture of the vehicle plate and driver most of the time, depending on how fast the vehicle is traveling. And seven, the locations of the LPRs, Little Stony Point, I-9D, just south of Peak Skill Road on 90, and east of Peak Skill Road and Main Street. These locations were picked to cover any access into and from the village. I just wanted to read those, so people knew a bit. I think the one piece that's missing was it's just that Larry hadn't talked to, or hadn't had time to talk to the other municipalities, but has since then. Okay. Uh, I think next was, uh, Justice Courts, the resolution, uh, 23, 2021, accepting the, uh, FY 2020, 21 audit and justice of the Justice Court. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second? Oh, can I second it if I wrote it? Yeah, okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, it's a roll call.
Okay, trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley? Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Randy?
Uh, yes. Thank you for, uh, your work on this. Was that, uh, Marie and Kathleen?
Kathleen, I'll probably read on this.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that was fun. Report from, uh, I think I got everything on the top right? Report from mayor and trustees?
Nothing. Not at this hour. See you tomorrow.
Did we do the, oh, Main Street's below it.
Do with that? Yeah, I had a thing on the slate written on there. Got stashed somewhere. If I can't find it, then we won't do it. It was just another, it was just a few things that I.
Maybe I should staple.
Got it. A couple things. Uh, one, in case anyone asks, and I'm sure somebody will, uh, the sloop called late in the day, um, asking if they could dock there. I made an executive decision and said they could, and Jeff told them that they need to, if they wanna, wanna park their little boat there any other time, that they need to send in an application or send in the dates that they'd like. So, uh, they were there, so if somebody asks. Um, let's see, just a quick one on, first, um, in the fire department, I, I forgot to, because I was shuffling around. Just wanted to congratulate Travis Feith, who officially became a firefighter and went through the academy or whatever they have to go through. And it's a lot of time, he, I think it's two days a week for four hours, and then Saturdays for six for like five months, so a lot of time goes into it. So congratulations to Travis. Update on the boiler for the, uh, and HBAC for the fire company. I'm waiting for the owner of the HBAC to come back from vacation, and, uh, so we can, uh, come up with a hybrid or go back to Plan A. Community update, we had two meetings, uh, working on details and getting commitments from the various groups. Uh, we've secured sound system and engineer and a duo and a band at this point. Fire weeks are secured, uh, there will not be a parade unless something changes drastically. And we placed a save the date ad in both papers. Uh, I'm not sure if we'll get in the PCNR, it was late this morning.
It's in the PCNR.
Is it? Uh, okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure it's up today.
Okay, and the current, Will, uh, Michelle up at the current did a nice job and created a little design for it, so it looks good. And then the set, save the date notices are on our webpage and Facebook page, and so far we have six volunteers.
Nice.
That's good. And that's all I have. Next is, uh, approval to rehire Bob Newell as a labor. As you know, Bob was working for us just delivered, you know, just for driving the garbage truck on two days, and then took full employment, back with Royal. So now we're short of SDL drivers, and he, and Bugsy talked to him about, uh, doing the Sunday shift, um, which he's willing to do. So, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to rehire Bob Newell as a labor for Sundays only at the rate of nineteen dollars an hour.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I want to give them back.
Aye.
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 I think we should table the discussion, uh, state group holders. No apparent rush, uh, Brandon asked to, to like, discuss that more before we just appointed, so, uh, let's just table that because of the time tonight, and we'll put it on our next available meeting. Request for pavers on 9, uh, 9 Main Street, this is from Barry Sokol. In this, Tommy, well, I won't say that. Uh, regarding two square tree pits in front of my house, I would like to improve the curb appearance by replacing grass with pavers similar to Upper Main Street. Thank you. I don't know, has anyone gone down there? I took pictures.
I talked to Jen today, and Jen's work sent us all an email right before the meeting.
The thing with this is that it's not a tree pit with a tree in it, and I don't think they have. It's a utility strip. So I'm not sure their purview is utility strips.
Yeah, she calls it the furniture strip.
Here is one picture, and then the other one that he's talking about is a little piece of that one. This is his house there. This, this one here. That one there is not in front of his house, that's.
Oh, I thought it was the other one he was talking about.
And then that one is the property that he's talking about.
It's good.
It's that little green grass and that little piece on there. And I don't see why, I don't know what he's talking about.
He wants to.
He wants to put a paver there. He said something about dogs urinating and smelling, but it doesn't look like it's too yellow.
He wants to do it himself, though, right? He wants to pay for it and have somebody do it?
I don't know. I, I personally am against it, but.
Well, I mean, Jen, Jen said no. Jen said no, against it.
Yeah, but Jen, it's not Jen's purview, so I would be asking Jen about a pit that's not, it's not a tree pit.
Because I think she was, it's our property and it's village property. And I think that's one of the locations, because there aren't wires there that they look to as a possibility for a plant.
That might be true, but there is no, it's not designated a tree pit. It's, I mean, it's a utility strip.
I'm just telling you what she said from when she had a conversation with Jeff.
I'm just saying, I don't think that she has purview over that, because there's not a tree there, and it's the tree board. I don't know, are they, is that, they have purview of all utility strips, whatever goes there? If you want to plant there, do you have to go to them? I, I don't know. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's like, we're going to talk to someone that might not even have, you know, we might not need to have input from, because there's not a tree.
That's my mistake. I was imagining it was the other side of that walkway.
Right, but it seems like we're continuing to talk about Jen, which we just did again. And that's why I'd like to stop it by saying, I don't think it's under their purview.
Okay, so, so at this point, it's grass and.
It's green.
It's green. And he can plant in it, right? Does he have to give permission?
He wants to plant in it.
No. He wants to put something, a tree in there, then he would go to the tree board. Put a little fence around it, he could do that. I think he would have to come to us for that. But it's come to us, it's, it's ours, so whatever anyone would like to do here. Tweets? Any thoughts? I'm sorry, this is, this is one of those things that's just gonna take forever if we don't just. Do you have a feeling one way or the other? Would you like it to be brick or?
No, I don't think it should be brick. If it's green now, I think it should stay green.
Okay, Fran?
I'm fine with leaving it alone.
Okay, I'm fine, too. Marie?
Yeah, I'm fine. Stay green.
Okay, we're staying green. Thank you all, yes. Um, I've had, uh, well, we've had, Jeff and I have both had the pleasure of discussing something, Barry, so.
I'll contact you, I'll contact you tomorrow.
I think a dyke system and similar to Holland around one end to the other to stop sea rise. Anyway, um, next, uh, short-term rentals, uh, we have time, is that fairly quick? Can you sum that up, Marie, or?
Okay, so.
Or we can table it, what do you want to do? I think we should try to discuss it if we can, if it's not gonna take forever.
It's not showing, it's not showing me the changes.
I thought I printed them in color.
You may have printed them in color, but the printout is in black and white.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there's.
I'm finding one. The penalties for non-compliance, John is.
The original was in color, when you made copies, it was in black and white.
And.
What's that? Sorry.
I was talking to Fran.
The major change is, um, 100 dash 12. There are some other changes, but, um, 100 dash, dash 12 says essentially, it's supposed to say, that for the calendar year 2021, uh, the village, there will be a different schedule. For every year other than 2021, what's stated above are the dates. So August 15th, September 1st, September 30th, blah, 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 blah. But in 2021, the village will advertise no later than August 15th. Applications will be accepted from September 1st to September 30th. Applications will be verified from October 1st to October 31st. And if your application is not correct, you have until October 31st to, to resubmit it. So that was, I thought there was also in here the, the change from number of days.
Page three, Marie.
Is it?
Page three on the, I'm sorry, what it was?
You can't see it because of the color.
Yeah, I thought I had printed it in color, but I didn't. So page three, it's 100 dash.
Yeah, you got it, you got it, yeah, okay. So, um, so we've got 90 days for both hosted and unhosted. Uh, the maximum number of nights, we have 90 nights for both hosted and unhosted. So that was another change.
And the other change?
It looks like.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Kathleen. Um, so in M, which is 100 dash four, um, we had said properties owned by corporations, LLCs and other such entities cannot be used as an SDR unless the property is owner occupied by one of the individual owners of the entity.
Well, that's a good solution.
And that's all of us.
So I, I think that's.
The, the other changes are just adjusting the numbers because we added, um.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I put 100 dash 12 before the old 100 dash 12. So the old, no, yes. So the old 112 is now 13. 13 becomes 14, 14 becomes 15. So. So given that, do you want to, is there any discussion on that?
Yes, anyone, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, just, just for the, for the record, John did opine on the, uh, he was concerned about the fees being high. But then when he realized that rentals can bring in so much money, he had no problem with it. Said he was gonna research it more, but we could pass it as it is, and we could change that easily in the future without going to.
So my one question is, are we gonna be ready for advertising on August 15th for applications for September 1st? Are we gonna be ready to go this?
I can change it to September 1st. Now that we have a way in which to do it, which is the introduction, introduction of 100 dash 12, we can change that.
So we have to send the date?
Advertising by September 1st.
Depends on when we send the date for the public hearing.
I'm just looking at the calendar, August 15th, today's July 13th. We do have to still send it to the county, and we need perhaps up to 30 days for them to get back and approve it, so that would put us at August 13th, August 14th, best case scenario.
Do we have the public hearing before we send to the county or after?
No, they, they could happen simultaneously, so we will send, we will send the proposed law.
No problem, I'll change it to September 1st.
Sounds good.
So that works.
And I'll adjust all the other dates.
Good.
So we need to now set a date, right?
Okay. So do you wanna?
Do we have a resolution?
Yes. It's in your package. So where the hell is it I'm gonna?
It's all over here, it is right here, saying time, place, for.
Oh, here it is. Oh, you got it, you got it.
Yeah, that's quick. Okay, so I'll make a motion to, uh, I guess it's an approved resolution number 24 dash 2021.
Second.
Setting a time and place for a second public hearing on our proposed law. Adding chapter 100 regarding short-term rentals and amending sections 134 dash 2, 134 dash 7, 8, 9, 13, 14, 15, uh, 15A of the code of the village.
Second, second.
Any further discussion? Or, no.
So when are we scheduling?
Sorry, we didn't set the date.
Yes.
July 27.
Oh, it is, I thought we changed it.
Oh, let it be further resolved in page two. July 27 is the public hearing, right?
At 6:30, right here.
So roll call, sorry.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Randy?
Please, a cigarette, please.
Mayor Randy?
Aye. Okay, yes. Okay, approval of bills?
I'd like to make a motion to approve batch number 6079, which is for the prior year or fiscal year 2020 dash 2021, in the amount of $13,556.2. Second.
Could you tell me where the 2 cents came?
Marie's gonna need a nicotine patch.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve batch number 6080, which is for fiscal, fiscal year 2021 dash 2022, in the amount of $11,723.97.
I will second that motion. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is approval of, uh, Board of Trustees' meetings. We have approval of, I'll make a motion to accept 62221.
Second.[1735.81]